But that's, you know, that's where the money comes in, same same with benefits, a little bit debt reduction. But um it's just an opportunity to kind of show you, you know, the big picture.
I'm gonna pause you for a second.
Yeah.
Uh our network administrator texted me and said that you can't hear anything. You have to escape, so we might be muted.
Are we muted? You have to turn that off on that one. Do I do it all?
No.
No, actually, we don't necessarily, please, we have a transcript. Yeah, um and it was it was billed as a hybrid, like people could.
Sounds like there's an echo.
Yeah.
Yeah. She's kind of clapping.
Oh, yeah.
Um you talked about one position, but the the police have then have a position in there also. Is that correct?
Uh, correct. From last year, from last year, not in, not.
We're finishing.
Yeah, that's that is correct, yeah. But I've just said we knew that position was there, right? I looked at this one and see, oh, we wouldn't be able to survive it. You were harvesting, right? Can you hear me now?
Can you go back to the mill rate slide and make it a a screen to show a presentation so we can actually, so I can see it. I'm sorry.
Of course.
Getting used to the site they print on these pages now, I can't.
I'm not thinking. I don't know why it didn't. It's not showing up.
So, see, it's in there. Uh, the new packet I put, after you get past the summary, there's a sheet in here called no rate cap, which I punched on the wrong side. Um, that shows the proposed mill rate would be twenty nine point oh eight. Um, the current mill rate is twenty eight forty three.
Dark lines, it's got columns going down.
Um, which is a point six five mill increase for a two point three percent increase.
Okay.
And now.
Oh, there you go.
Well, when I did this, it was on the other computer, so I don't know. I don't know what happened.
Did Jen just make that?
I have in her mind.
And could you just show me the next one, too?
I was, I was there. How's your driver?
So I can't see that, but I like that slide.
Do you like the color?
But it's hard to make it bigger than that.
Yeah.
But I think you can email this to the board. Tomorrow. Yeah, sure. I just said the presentation, everybody.
I would like to say it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then the next one, of course, was the uh, was really just where the where the growth was, you know. It's kind of hard to show that in a diagram, but this just showed us, obviously, salaries was a big thing, benefits is big. Nice choke of debt service, and that was because, of course, we changed the debt service plan. Um, but this, this is, I think, in order to speak volumes, is where, is where our money is spent. And by the way, I mean, in addition to that salary line, there's a lot of other stuff that takes care of people's clothing allowances and all the other stuff. If you look at the people expenditure, it's in the paper. Um, I think that was it. I tried to go through, I never want to get.
No. Does anybody have any other questions or or just some clarity on anything with Dan?
I feel like we've been doing this for three months.
Some of us have.
Yeah.
I do.
Yep.
Um, so some of this stuff, when you're talking about, um, you know, increasing, like this is a bare bones budget. And then you, we have to grow it over time, but we have also some safeties in place that we didn't have before, like we have the tax stabilization fund. C N R, thanks to Mr. Van Prater's guidance and the short term term debt paid off. That, you know, we do, and and the, you also looked over ARPA fund, so I'm not saying that we should never, because of the world of budget. I'm saying we have safeties in place that we never had before, so that's progress. It's not.
Oh, we're, we're doing, so I'm not complaining. I mean, we're.
No, no.
There was a lot of COVID money, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're, we're doing everything right.
Yeah.
We're doing the right of the taxpayer of this budget and also by the services.
Absolutely.
I believe we are.
I agree with you.
I, I, I think I'm just, I, I know we're not always going to be the smart team, you know, but we'll do our best.
Yeah, but we do have those safeties, we won't have ARPA money, but we do have those, like, C N R and Yeah, but we do have those safeties, we won't have ARPA money, but we do have those, like, C N R and, um, and the tax stabilization fund that if we need to, could use it, it's a really bad year.
Yeah.
For people, like as a, one of the humble homeowners, no, I'm not humble, but my home is.
Agreed.
Got hammered. One of the people got hammered.
I know, I appreciate it.
Okay. Um, you know, I was a big pusher for, for, for trying to slow down spending only because of what people did last year. There was people 1500 to 2000, and again, that's a real money for a small family. And I felt important to, to, yes, to pay what we need, but try to keep back some of the, um, the other costs down to a low minimum. And I appreciate Dr. Carver and Jen, I know you did a lot of work on it, and obviously Dan, um, I, I appreciate, I know I whine a lot, but I feel like we, we went somewhere, so. Is there anybody else? You guys ready to rock? Yeah. Thank you, Dan.
All right, um, we're going to start with the Board of Ed, just because, uh, the biggest audience here is for the Board of Ed, you mean, I still, Dan was un-nice to you last week, but I was going to straighten that out. So does anybody want to make a motion on the 460 account?
Yep, so I got it, in the spirit of trying to move things along, I'm willing to make a motion on the particular, uh, lines and the dollar amount. And if anybody has any changes, I'm also willing to amend my motion after discussion and convincing me. Maybe, maybe you convince me, maybe you don't. So first on the agenda is account 70 dash 460, the Board of Education maintenance account. I want to make a motion that we fund it for $526,017, that's presented by the first selectmen's.
I'll second that.
Um, so we have a motion, we have a second, just discussion on it. We did walk through schools and we do see, uh, again, John and I, I think we've said it once or twice, but we need to take care of what we have here instead of worrying about the next shiny object. And this money does help us getting, um, some floors fixed and, and be proud of things. There was a couple of things I was a little bit surprised about, and, um, I, I fully support this mortgage, uh, this mortgage, just, yeah, the mortgage in my house. This motion, thank you, John. So any discussion on the 460 motion and second? All in favor?
Well, oh, you, you need to start waving your arms, I'm great.
If I could, I would just ask Dr. Carver, so what things don't get done with the 100,000 dollars? So I think that, um, what, what Dan said was accurate, meaning that they would look for other funding sources.
Right.
Some of the major things that could be, that needed to be done. So he asked us to send a kind of a short list of things that could be funded by ARPA for capital, yeah, capital not recurring. Um, and we, we've provided that information to him, so I'm hoping the area will do everything.
Chairman, if I might, um, you know, a couple of the things, uh, there was an HVAC automation, software license renewal for 35,000.
Yeah.
Um, some dumpster closure repairs, modifications, some partition, uh, panels in the bathroom, and, uh, maybe a card access reader. Uh, replacement carpet, the circle of friends, and then the main office, so there's some, some things like that, that really lean more capital in nature. Those are what we're targeting, and there were, uh, there was another thing too, uh, it's not on this, but those are giving you an idea of the, the flavor of what we're looking at.
I'll try, everybody, everybody in support of that motion?
I.
Raise your hand, please, thank you. Dr. Kachoe unanimous, uh, 450.
Do you?
No, no. I say I.
Great, so let's go to 450.
Yep.
Someone like to make a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve account 70 dash 450 in the amount of 54,751,130,000.
I'll second that.
And we have a second, uh, any other discussion on the, the 450 account?
I just have one comment, I, I gotta tell you, for years I've been saying, just prove to me what you need, and I'm willing to give it to you. Maybe not what somebody wants, but if you prove to me the need is there, you know, I'm all for, you know, supporting the kids in the town. And I, and I think that you proved the need, and this is a very responsible budget, especially on a, a year where, where, where Bethel community is really struggling to, to make ends meet. So thank you for that.
Job well done, and with all those unfunded mandates.
D, is there something like that? All right, anything else on the 450 motion? All in favor, sing, say an aye?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies. I appreciate that.
Well, and Scott.
Oh, and Scott.
You want to clear the rest, we got library, Carson, Raffensperger?
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, you want me to jump around a little bit?
Yeah, I think library is actually next.
So I'd like to make a motion, account number 60 dash 435, the library, that we make, uh, my motion is to approve 988,109. Can you say it right? 988,122 dollars as presented by the first selectmen's.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, I think we all had a, a presentation, is there any questions on the library board?
Just a comment.
Yes.
I'd love to come to start, Nick, and you know that. I just think you're just like one of the most responsible and, uh, conscientious and passionate directors, and I, I really appreciate everything you do.
Is there anything else? Let's try everybody's mind, everybody in favor of John's motion, please. Excellent.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, um, you know, I want to start back with room 100, it won't take long. It really won't take long, but I want more people in the room.
Oh.
Because I'm probably going to take hits here. So.
Where are you going?
Police.
All the way 100, or what, is it 105?
100.
100.
Let's just run up and lose his audience, so. Ready?
Uh, jump right in, John?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve account 10 dash 100, the selectmen's account, in the amount of 296,386 dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, John, if you'd accept the, uh, to amend your mo, I'm sorry, if you'd like to, uh, uh, accept amended motion, and Cynthia, I'd like to add 20,000 to the 5101 account. Um, and a new total would be 311,136. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Um, so we have a motion, a second, um, you know, this is probably not going to be a popular thing, it's never a good time. Um, I know we did a little bit with, um, the last first selectmen, but we did some research, um, about surrounding towns and size of towns. And, um, the first selectmen's salary at 109 is just way too low. Um, if we're trying to keep a professional here, um, and someone looking for the town in interest, I think it's important to get it at least comparable to other towns. So that's why, um, I made a motion to add to that, so we have a second, is any discussion on that?
Yes, I'll, I will, sorry, well. So two years ago, we did bump it up, we added $9,000, and, and I don't think there's ever a good time, but I, I think I agree with you, Nick, that, you know, the town of Bethel has become just south of a hundred million dollar corporation, right? So years ago, of Charlie Steck being a farmer and running the town at a 40,000, a 40 million, was that?
52.
52 million dollar budget, it was a little easier. Right now, we need a CEO that's willing to, to run a hundred million dollar corporation, there's a lot, there's a lot to happen here, and, and it's not small peanuts anymore. So I think we need to attract the best candidate we could for, for, for the position.
Uh, can I just add?
Through salary.
So I think in your motion, Nick, you have to set the first selectmen's salary at 129,600.
Okay, so amended, it's, that, the, the selectmen, the first selectmen's salary would be 129 even.
Uh, 600.
I'm sorry, 129,600, and do I have a second on that amended?
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that?
I just have a final question.
Yes. Please.
Nick, I thought I heard you say at $50,000.
No, 20,000.
20.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, everybody put on that. Listen, Dan and I have good days and bad days, it was not 50,000.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes.
Um, one of the things too, when we were looking at other salaries that have seen different towns, this actually puts us right between Reading and Newtown. Like smack dab in the middle, so, so it, it is a really, I think, really good salary position to attract people who want to have a full-time job doing this. Uh, and I've said this many times, this is not a retirement job, we want energetic people who really want it, and, and we've talked about this, you know, when I was on the board of finance. So, uh, I think it's, I think it's a good move, obviously, I get to that.
I think I'll win here.
Yeah, I mean, really.
I want to, I want to put that out there with respect to where we are in the range of Newtown.
It's nothing.
But you have a small farm, right? You're a farmer? No?
Yeah, maybe, for long, you never know.
Um, but for, for me, I, I, I think it's great to be competitive, but in addition, I mean, Dan's been working his butt off, and he, I mean, he's everywhere all the time, and so very accessible, and I just, yeah, I just think he deserves it, honestly.
Well, and, and if I might, I, I appreciate that thought, again, it's, it's the position.
But I know it's the position, and it's not the person.
Yeah.
But I mean, you've proven the amount of work and the amount of, you know, everywhere all the time that you have to be, and the accessibility and all that. So I meant that as the position, it's a very taxing position.
Will, did you have something?
Sure. I'm not, we, I'm not really opposed to, to increase. I don't mind getting 20,000.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not about that.
Getting 20,000, I have a problem. Um, Reading and Newtown, being between Reading and Newtown, I wish we had income that put our people in the middle of Reading and Newtown. It's, that's not the case, we're a blue collar town. Uh, I, I mean, that's a huge increase, and I just cannot swallow that. In fact, one of the things I wanted to talk about today was actually eliminating the selectmen's salaries, like, and now, given the first selectmen's position, April, 20,000 dollars. Uh, I just can't swallow that.
Okay, and, and I can appreciate it.
We're not so blue collar anymore, I, I, I appreciate what you're saying, well, but, I mean, we're not.
I think we are.
Yeah, you know, when all, the, most of the teachers and all the police department, um, all the other positions are getting more than the first selectmen, I, 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 I feel that we're not supporting the first selectmen. And again, it's the position, you know, it, it really is, um, you know, we love this town, and if, if we don't have quality people, um, I, I think, what are we doing this all for?
The, the only thing that I've ever, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The only thing that, that has ever concerned me is that, because the, you know, the, the, um, the phantom of the town manager lurking, so if it's too good, like, I just love the town in form of government, and I wouldn't want to think that, um, we would ever.
Forced into that.
Have someone who had aspirations to be a town manager. Um, that's just me.
I, I appreciate Will's point. And I appreciate people who could look at a salary of 129.6 and say, that's a very rich salary. Uh, what, what, how I would address that is, again, it's the position, it's a, if you think about it in terms of enterprise, it's a $90 million a year in revenue and enterprise, and last time I looked at the grand list, 2 billion plus of assets. That's a big company, and I would say to the folks who legitimately and understandably say that's a lot of money to pay someone, I, I would look at it almost in reverse, right? We are paying, you can't bring people to protect your positions as maybe someone who's in a different field, not a CEO role. Hopefully, we can, we can make it clear to people that this role, I take the point, let's not personalize it to Dan's role, I think. Mission against self-interest, he's doing a great job, right? Um, I, I think the way you can hopefully explain it to people is that by paying this really market salary, I think we have a lot of data that says it's market for our first select position, and maybe even still a somewhat below, if we were to think about it in a corporate world, for 910,000, but we're protecting their assets, so, so, you know, the person who, who is not a finance person, sees this, eat numbers, and lots, a lot, I think the response is, that's what people in these roles get, to protect you and to give you the highest level of comfort that, that the town is being run as well as us. So I, I, I completely get the, well, that's a lot of money, and quite many of us have been on a lot of sidelines during soccer games, baseball games, deal on you, all those things, right? And trying to explain to folks that this role is really, you know, so, I, I'm happy to hear about the increase and its support. Strongly.
Can I make one other request of this? I'd love to have the Board of Finance and not necessarily excited at a future meeting, request the P U C, pay a portion of the first selectmen's salary.
I agree.
I, I get it, split it.
Yeah, just even. Three grand out of each one, I think.
I got it.
It's sort of like the same relationship between the, the train parking at the state, because, yeah.
Or even the controls.
Right.
Part of my salary is paid by the water and sewer user.
Right, it makes total sense, I would love to take that up itself.
You know, three, three, four years ago, when this world went upside down, 100,000 was a lot of money, Will. Today, when, when the price of eggs and, and forget the inflation, forget the politics, 100,000 is not a lot of money anymore. It, and I can't believe it's coming out of my mouth, you know what I mean, I cannot believe it.
Yeah.
You know, but in a salary, and if you did the hours, and then a typical, you know, to, to not make this personal, it's probably 25,000 an hour. You know, so that's the only reason I'm, I'm pushing, I, I, I want to make sure that we don't fall behind on some things, so, but I do appreciate your opinion.
Again, you, uh, it's the position that's getting a 20% increase this year.
It's because I think it was way low, you know, they're, they're not, they don't belong into a union, the town clerk even makes, oh, sorry, doesn't make more, excuse me. But what I'm saying is, they don't get their union to, to make sure they get their 3, 4, 1 and 1/2 percent, you know what I mean? So.
I'm familiar with that.
You know, and, and it's an easy target, you know what I mean? And I get it, it's never a good time to do something like this, but I think we need to catch up, and then maybe re-entertain each year to make sure we don't fall behind.
I mean, if, if you did this in increments, it'd be different, doing it all in one year.
I get it.
Uh, it's just too big.
And, and, and when we get further into our, our, uh, adjustments here, um, it, it's in, in wage contingency, so it's not an increase, we're not increasing this budget.
Yeah, that money is in wage.
But if you just gave a hundred thousand dollar salary a 3% increase this year, it's 3,000, so if you said, geez, that's too low, let's do 6, now we're 6,000. You know what I mean, so, so 20 is not far off of trying to catch up to a salary that we're trying to attract the best candidate to run our town of 90 million.
And the thing is, you want somebody who's a really good manager, I mean, someone who really sees the big picture.
30,000 foot look, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
But apparently, we did get a good manager, we all, we all.
Yeah, we have.
Applaud Dana and took the job for what it is now. So the salary now presently is attracting a good manager.
Dan did not ask me to, to consider this, I'm considering it for the town.
Why, I know, I was just saying, what I, my point is, is that the present salary, even before we do increase it, I, I think we should increase it, not 20%.
I.
Uh, attracting qualified individuals.
My question is, are you going to attract him next time to run again if you don't increase it?
And, yeah.
They had no idea, fair point, they have no idea what they're walking into, so of course they increase the salary until you walk in to the door and you sit in, you sit in his shoes. The question is, are you going to get somebody the next time? That's, that's a question.
And also, Will, there's a component of it that is the love of Bethel, I mean, you can factor that in, that it's not a CEO salary, but there is a component of it that, you know, you want in the person.
Okay, so we have a motion, a, a amended motion and a second, so I'll try everybody's mind on that one. All in favor on the change of 20,000 dollars? See if I say an aye? Will, I appreciate your, your position, I, I, I really do, so, I do.
Mary, that's a nay.
Aren't you guys glad you stayed for all this now? It's not only the parking racks. Um, I'd like to make a motion, I'm sorry, Bob, did you? Oh, Dee, I'm sorry. Did she wave her arm?
Yes. I mean, seriously. She has got a flag.
I just wanted to further record, Nick, I think you said that our teachers made more than 100,000.
Some positions, not everybody, and yes.
Yeah, the administrators do, though.
Thank you, you're absolutely right. Um, so I'd make a new motion, so account 100, the selectmen of 316, 80, I'm sorry, 3, 3, 316,386 dollars. Um, so I have a second on that new number?
Second.
Yeah, 316, 386.
Okay, so we have a second, and I'm sorry.
Second.
Mary's got a second, so any other discussion on the selectmen's account? There's no other changes besides small, but, uh, I'm sorry?
Um, one of these, I wanted to ask the Board of Finance about, um, is the selectmen's salary. What are the arguments, I think we're going through a children revision this year?
Right?
One of the arguments against expanding the Board of Selectmen to a 500 board, which is something that I wish we had done 20 years ago, is, well, now we got to pay for selectmen a salary. I was wondering, you know, and it's an elected position, no different than, I mean, I just think the Board of Ed was actually a harder job than.
Put the Board of Finance in there too.
Board of Finance, we're going to have a close second. It's not, um, there's no reason that one position should be getting a $5,000.
there's no reason that one position should be getting a five thousand dollar stipend.
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five, oh, wow, geez, that raises.
I, I didn't do it well.
And then, you know, other elected boards are putting just as much time, just some more, don't get any.
Did you want to make a motion?
And I can make a motion that we reduce the selectmen's, not the first eleven, selectmen's salaries, uh, to, to zero from eleven thousand dollars?
Yeah. So we have a motion to, uh, again, does anybody second Will's motion? Will, I think you, you explained it. I mean, I would second it for discussion, but I, I'm not sure we need to.
Yeah.
All right, so let that one die. So again, my original motion for three hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. We had a second. Any other discussion on that motion? Try everybody's mind. Everybody in favor? Please see the side saying aye.
Aye.
And one nay. Will, I do appreciate the input.
Um, okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Please. Keeping with the spirit of trying to clear the room. So I'd like to make a motion, account twenty dash three sixty, the Bethel Police Department. I'd like to make a motion that we fund it in six million, two hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars as presented by the first selectman.
Oh, second go.
We have a second. Any discussion on the police? Does everybody know there's, I'm sorry, Bob. Yes, I was just going to say there, there's over a six hundred thousand dollar increase. Um, I, I know there was some of the money in contingency salary, but most of the senior officers got four and a half percent. Any new hires or younger guys got three percent. Um, I think Brad was carrying two and a half percent in contingency?
Three.
Three. So there was a whole six hundred thousand that we're making up this year. So it, it's a huge increase. Um, again, public safety is a big thing, obviously, and the quality of life in town. Um, but I just want everybody to know that it's over six hundred thousand.
Yeah, so the wage adjustment account last year between the police and the dispatchers at two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
So we had to make up for something, yeah.
With the contract, let's see, which could look like extra.
Well, we only have one more year.
This is the, this is the last year of that current contract that was done because it was so far in the rears. Um, so it's got to be negotiated again. It, I think this contract ends six thirty, twenty-five, right? Yeah. Yeah.
And it's the same increase for the last two years to the, for the last year on the contract?
Police top step for twenty twenty-five is four percent. And this also includes the dispatchers, which their top step is three and a half percent.
Not twenty percent.
Not twenty percent, no. But twenty percent is not a small enough. And a hole. All right, so, um, any other, Brad, I'm sorry, not Brad. Yeah, yeah, he might as handsome.
Not even close. Brad, yes. I, the question that I have is this, I, I'd like to better understand what the thinking was behind for the reduction in the fifty-four zero three, that's the cars. And, you know, when, when I think about what our priorities are, safety is first, right? It's like a, a team, I, 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 please. And I think for us to make sure that the police are there to help us, they got to be able to get there.
Well, with the cars, there are other sources. Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me.
Great, my name is Nick. So do we. Our look at this is from other sources. So on one hand, I'm like, you know, look, you need to get, get these guys the cars in. And that is a budget item, right? It's an every year thing. It probably really shouldn't be in capital. And then I see from other or with other sources, I'm getting a little nervous about the uncertainty.
But we still have ARPA funds. We, I mean, we won't have it forever.
Is, is that the, well, and again, not to speak for Dan. Yeah, Dan, you can speak on this.
Um, well, well, and as you know, I am a member of the board. I just can't vote. And I don't count for forum, so I have no responsibility. But, um, we did talk about this in the board of selectmen, and I talked about this in caucus with Brian. There's a commitment there to make sure they get their cars. At the end of the day, you know, we were looking at some of the ARPA funds as a way to fund some of these capital things. And we know what a difficult year this is. We don't want to create ARPA holes in anything. Right? But at the same time, we're, we're not, we want the, the police to get their cars this year. And frankly, I know for sure one of them will, will do ARPA down the line. Um, maybe if there were leftover savings that we ended up at C N R someday, maybe we collaborate on something like that. But we do not want to not fund the cars. We just realize this year is hard and we're looking for opportunities to kind of offset what's happening in the increase of all our spending with ARPA. To a reasonable amount. We, you know, we have other things we still have to do. Um, you know, there's things over at Polo Park that we're looking at. Um, maybe even Mitchell Park. And so there are other ARPA type projects that we want to do. But where we can go in for some of these little, you know, like with the four succeed count, with capital for the police department, with, uh, the couple of items for the fire department that does deal, at least signal we're taking some off the table. Right? So we can get those, you know, get the extra money on budget. So that was the idea, as far as going to extra money.
And I, I appreciate that. That's, that's helpful. Thank you. Just one last question. If I think about it in terms of sources of funding, and there are all the sources that we know, and then uses. Have you all had the opportunity yet to kind of size those up to say, well, you know, maybe things will move within a group? But at the end of the day, we're ninety-five percent confident, right, with a statistical analysis, true standard deviations out. We're ninety-five percent confident that our sources will be sufficient, some of these being other sources, to pay for that seemingly ever-growing list of items that you need to pay for in the next, I don't know, two, three, or four years?
Well, you, to your point, uh, this is the last year we have to allocate ARPA. It has to be spent by the end of twenty-six. So it has to be allocated.
Yeah, allocated by the end of twenty-six.
Allocated by this year, tell, yeah, allocate, spent by the end of twenty-six. Uh, there are a number of things that, you know, the community, I think, is looking for, like I said, Polo Park, some of these other, other things. We do have enough to take care of these items we're talking about. But I mean, I don't look at this, this is not a long-term thing. It's going to go away. We know that. We're, we're.
We're going to have our own cliff.
With, with the paramedic intercept, right? And that's a great example. Because that's a pretty significant, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It makes sense, you know, to take a little bit of the edge off with seventy-five thousand dollars this year. Because the next year, we know we're going to have to do it. If we have a little more money left in ARPA, you know, at the end of this, we've talked about actually, you know, doing some replenishing of that account in general. Because I think there's a priority towards public safety. Historically with ARPA, public safety is part of that priority. Um, and tools. So if you see, like, we're trying to, like, when it comes to the capital, we'll say revenue replacement, we're trying to fit it in those buckets. We also know there's been a significant, you know, need from the public for things that we wouldn't normally get, except because of ARPA. In the past year, I've actually been, I would say, going more towards fire department, more towards, you know, I would say public safety and things like that with our funds. There's a little bit of a diversion of where we were in the last administration. So from that source, I mean, it's going to dry up. We're getting, but I'm, I'm confident where we are with this budget, that the might be taken, I, I think we're fine. And I have the commitment from the other selectmen, you know, we've talked about it. Um, the, the three of us have to decide and frankly, the votes will go our way. For these, I, I believe that.
So, yeah. Chief is here. He's going to be able to leave this meeting. If, if any of his team asks, he's going to say, yeah, we're going to get our, our cars, our four cars. Those folks are going to figure out how it's going to be paid for, but, yeah, yes.
And, and to our point earlier about capital planning?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. And to our point about capital planning, we, we do have to do a better, better job, I think, as a town of looking all these cars and just and really plugging them in and saying, oh, how far out would we think we need the next one to look long-term? So we're not always fighting this battle about, they'll take in the cars. It's only worked in the last few years because of the pandemic. Once we're out of ARPA money, we got to really make a commitment to making sure they have the vehicles they need to do their job.
But to Bob's point, should they be going into the operating budget?
They are. So, but can I?
Right, because that would take.
So one of the discussions that we had prior to the board of selectmen meeting is, yeah, there, ideally, we would have gone to at least three cars this year. The problem is the manufacturers keep jacking up the price of the cars. The accounts up sixteen thousand dollars worth like thirteen percent just to maintain what they currently have. So I think that's hard too, to, so you would have been up another fifty-five on top of that at a car. So I think some of that hopefully starts chilling out as we get past the COVID car crunch. Uh, but it's a thirteen percent increase just to maintain what they have, which is crazy.
In their budget from this year.
Yeah. It's no fault of their own. It's just, like, the chief is here. He could probably talk for half an hour about what Ford and Chevy and everybody's doing for price of cars. Um.
Three of the two cars that they're going to get have caught a.
Yeah, the account's up thirteen percent just to maintain what they currently have.
That's, you don't mind, I can just explain that real quick.
Please.
You don't mind? Like, the cars went from thirty-five two years ago to thirty-eight, thirty-nine, all the way up forty-five, up to fifty next year. So that's the increase we've seen in these cars. And Nick, if you don't mind, one other place of comment. The only concern I have going, keeping it operating at two is next year is going to look like a huge increase when I ask what we're for.
We're building our cliff.
And that's the only concern I have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I think.
And it's valid.
I think consistently, year over year, chief comes and asks for four cars. And consistently, we knock that down. You've been lucky to be able to do one or two other cars in another way over the past couple of years, but it's like consistent. So like, you probably shouldn't be planning for four cars a year. That's what's needed.
And the hard part, because I just pulled up the history, in twenty twenty, the budget for the capital plan for police was one forty-six. So this cliff was really created in twenty twenty when we went down to two cars. So it's not necessarily because we had ARPA. I don't even know if we had, no.
No, we didn't even have that.
We didn't even know. I seen our one year.
Yeah.
Two.
So this is, it, it has been created in the past. We'd love to fix it. When we looked at everything, we didn't think it was the best year to go back up to at least three. Um, and we do, it is the last, in budget-wise, it's the last six months that we have ARPA because we have it from July one, twenty-four to twelve thirty-one, twenty-four to allocation.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes.
Uh, thi- this is kind of gets in that conversation where I was talking about the tax, you know, we're going to be at two point three increase in this. You know, if we were looking at two point five or looking at two point nine and trying to just be stable, we'd be more likely to fund a couple of these things instead of looking for every piece of meat, you can rip off that bone. And those do create holes and they have consistently. Understanding this may not be the year, but going forward, there's going to be a time where we pay a piper. I think we're going to have to look at that.
And last year, our increase was three point six nine, or three point eight. And it's not the increase, it's the middle class. You know what I mean? You know, that's who took it. You know what I mean? And, and, and that's why I'm pumping the brake on it. You know, the commercial buildings in town got a, got a decrease in their taxes and everything shifted to a different per, you know, different.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think you've seen by where we've come in on this budget as a board select.
Hundred percent.
We feel the same way this year, but it doesn't, I, I wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I didn't warn of the cliffs that are coming. And we're, we're definitely going to have to look at as a group next year.
Thank you. That's okay. So I believe we're at the police, three sixty. We had a motion and, uh, and a second. Uh, I'll try everybody's mind. All in favor on the three sixty account? Please say, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chief, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, Chief.
Um, do you want to jump around, John? Do you want to make Rachel wait?
Yeah.
Are you on a clock right now or not?
Salary, right?
Oh, I'm here just in pure choice.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve account ten dash three eighty, the park and recreation, and the amount of two million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars that presents by the first select.
Oh, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I think, uh, this was the year of park and rec with everything going on. I think we've talked about this.
It's more than my twin brother.
Oh, my God. He does the two, yeah.
So is there any other discussion on the park and rec? Because I want this to be over.
Yeah, let's, let's just put this one in fact.
All right, I'm going to try everybody's mind. Everybody in favor of us straightening out park and rec? Bye. Rachel, thank you. Starting to get a little punchy now. It's only ninety-eight o'clock. Excellent. John, could you go back to one oh five or not?
Really?
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve account ten dash one oh five, economic development, and the amount of eighty-eight thousand, seventy-seven dollars. But before somebody seconds, I just want to make full disclosure, I am currently a member of the Economic Development Commission, but see no, uh, issues with voting on this.
Excellent. Thank you, Daniel.
Second, I second.
So we have a second.
Eighty-eight and seventy-seven dollars, yeah.
Yeah, and again, everybody knows that we, we kind of tried to, for transparency, split this out of the board of selectmen, and Dan was in favor. Um, I didn't realize we actually have to do something in the charter to split this.
We're actually creating the department. We'll have to, we'll have to do that.
And that needs to be a condo open. I didn't realize that was one more leg on.
Actually just create the.
So are we allowed to do this now? But then we'll catch up with the open.
Sometime between now and July first.
Right, before we start this.
Yep.
Bob, did you have something on the E D C? You look like you had a question. Or that was Dee, I'm sorry, Dee. Yeah, yeah, her hair got so long. She hasn't seen it in six months. Thank you for entertaining my humor. All right, I'll try everybody's mind here on, uh, John's motion and Cynthia's second for economic development. Everybody in favor? Please sing the side saying aye.
Aye.
The record shows unanimous. Thank you. Do you have anything else, Mr. Leonard?
Account ten dash one ten, the treasurer's account, I'd like to make a motion that we approve it at five thousand, five hundred dollars as presented by the first selectman.
Second.
Just as a, just say no, except by the board of finance. Obviously, if you don't make any motions to change it, it stays at the fifty-five.
Yeah, well, Will hasn't spoke yet.
Yes.
Well, think about it. Is there any other discussion? I'd like to try everybody's mind. All in favor? Say, say an aye.
Aye.
Let the record show.
Account ten dash one twenty, the controllers, I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the amount of four hundred and fifty-two thousand, fifty-seven dollars as presented by the first select.
Second.
So we have a second. Um, I'd like to say, Sebby, I mean, I know you're doing all the work up there. No, really. I mean, I know where the butter is being bred.
What side of the bed is buttered on?
Right. It starts from the top.
Jesus there to make you look at.
Delegation.
Does anybody have any, uh, uh, questions or, or comments about, uh, the controllers?
What you're going to give her twenty thousand dollars?
No, I said, thank you.
Dan sets that.
Yeah, that's all you get this year. Thank you.
I'll try everybody's mind on that. All in favor on the controllers?
Aye.
And I could show you now this.
Account ten dash one thirty, the town clerk, I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars as presented tonight.
Second.
All right, John, if you amend your motion, I would like to add on fifty-one oh one to the town clerk's salary of the dollar amount of twenty-four hundred and sixty-one dollars. The new total would be on the salary line to be one ninety-four oh thirteen. Um, so do I have a second on that first?
I'll second that.
You have a second. Um, this is one of the things that we're in charge of, elected official. Um, the, the women in that office get a three percent increase, so that reflects a three percent. Uh, she's not in the union negotiating a bargain. We normally would do this in August. I think it's important to be transparent during butt season when every, oh, there's no one here, when everybody's watching. Um, so that was my motion. If anybody has anything else to add?
I, I do, Will. I, I saw that your body language, that you were like, oh, here goes another raise. But if we don't keep up with the town clerk, like her staff, people are going to.
I'm okay. But I'm heavy, heavy. Get off the counter, John. Get off the counter.
What I'm going to get to is, what was the rate of, what was the rate of official last year?
Say it again.
What was the rate of, um, had a.
Oh, four, five?
Yeah. Yeah. What was it? Little over four, Dan said. And we give her a three percent raise.
Again, that's negotiated with the, with the other, um, and people in our office are getting. So I'm not asking for more than, than what's the union, you know, but she's not part of it, and I think it's important to try to keep up. We can do twenty thousand if you want. Was that a motion?
No, I don't know.
But if we don't take an opportunity to give her the small three percent increases like the other staff, in three years, we're going to be like, hey, can we get fifteen dollars? And that's, and that's what we're trying to.
I've been planning in a government position where you don't get raises.
And you should be getting raises. Like the private sector, I don't get raises.
Or in my case in the private sector, you get a raise, a smaller rate of play. Um, but that's what, I'm okay with, uh, eating the rest. Um, but that's what, I'm okay with, uh, giving the rest of the offices raises.
Excellent, I appreciate support and emotion, Bob, did you have something?
Do we need to break out how? It's been a while since I thought about this, so I apologize. Some of her salary is paid from the town sites, some of it from the parking.
Yeah.
And we talked about that, Brad.
It's like a hundred dollar change, cause it's like nine point five percent's paid. So I said to Nick, it's probably cleaner, just do the twenty-four sixty-one.
And she gets no, no increase on that, but she's getting the increase.
Also come out of, oh, sorry, you were.
Well, what I was gonna ask is though, that department has probably a significant amount of money, right? And it can only be used for certain things.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it make more sense to take money, more money from that department to increase her salary?
I think Wes, we just don't have control of that.
Well, can I actually, yeah, there's a couple of things to consider that account that are, one, we just put it in a kiosk, a separate kiosk down there, out of that account. And the, uh, the train station, our lease to the state is also up next year. And with that and renegotiating it, there is an opportunity for the state to actually take us for that money back.
Yeah.
So I, I'd probably be a little careful right now, you know, rely on too much of it. They can come back or they can take a portion back out of it over the, they never asked for it over the last twenty years.
I've been here thirteen, they never taken a dollar, even when they expanded the parking.
I mean, how much is in that?
Over a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it was two hundred plus.
But it can only be used for.
But there also on the Capitol plant is the canopy along needs repair. Um, I think when the board gave her bump years ago and for the, the base, the workload is what kind of dedicated the nine and a half percent, um, that gets allocated, I think. If you disentgenives every year, we go, all right, we're bumping it up, the salary up, we're gonna bump the percentage up, so the train station just takes all of it. If the workload is the workload, then it should just be split based on what the workload is, not necessarily how we want to fund it.
Wouldn't this also be taken out of wage contention?
Correct, yeah. Uh, Lisa has her hand up, but obviously you don't have to throw it to her if you don't want to.
No, we don't have to hear from Lisa.
I would like to.
Lisa, is there something you'd like to?
She popped up and then she probably heard us say her name and then she.
She had her hand raised.
She was, there she is.
There she is. Open queue.
That's on mine now.
Yeah, cause that's the Google meeting, there she is.
I think she would just.
She's up at the top, there she is.
Lisa, if you want to talk, you gotta unmute and talk.
You have to go to the little dots to the side of her name. Okay, I maybe she can't.
Why is she? How about all unmuted?
She can. Maybe because she's a viewer, she wasn't hooked by it.
All muted. Are we unmuted?
Unmuted.
I should have unmuted yourself.
Yeah, she has unmuted herself. Unmute yourself, Lisa. It's where the pictures aren't coming up on this.
Turn the volume up.
It has to be the gallery view, it's the same as soon.
A little blue thing is speaking, so.
Did you guys unmute yourselves?
Yeah, we're unmuted.
Remember how we had Nick when we turned down the volume?
The change. That was just their Mary's not there.
Tell her to call us.
She goes, sorry, for the record, she sent me a text and she said, all good now, I can't unmute, but she's fine.
Okay, oh, good.
Lisa, I didn't want you to mess it up anyway, so I think we got this covered.
Yeah.
So, um, Dee, you understand that that train is really, we can't touch it. It was gonna be.
I'm not sure that that can be entirely true, because we have like allocated that money before, but I'm okay.
But it was for that workload.
But I, I think we do have some access.
So the Board of Selectmen oversees all funds, not general funds. So the Board of Selectmen, you can make a request to the Board of Selectmen to look at the allocation.
They still need to act on it.
They would need to act on it.
I just wanted to say to your question that, that the last time we did that, we accessed that money specifically because she was taking it out of war with those kiosks and everything, so it really was for the train station.
But I think Dee's saying if she's getting a percentage for her work, then it should be a percentage.
I get it.
Brad, when was, um, when was Lisa's last raise?
I think, uh, the last couple of years, the board has addressed it every year.
Yeah, she always goes in fighting for it.
Yeah, it's true.
No, she did that, you're right.
But I think cause the, at this point now, the Board of Finance has been at least talking about it every year, there was years that it wasn't. Um, so it was increased in July of twenty-three, was increased in July of twenty-one, two, was increased in July of twenty-one, was increased in twenty, so I think for the last four years, but before twenty twenty, it hadn't been increased since twenty seventeen. So at that point, a larger raise was given, a five thousand dollars raise was given, but there wasn't a raise for three years. So I think at this point, as handling it as part of the budget discussions, I think it's clean some of that stuff up. And when the salaries in the ranges should be, if you just increase it by what the increase should be, you're not doing big jumps.
Trying to catch up.
Correct.
All right, so, um, again, we have a motion and a second on the fifty-one oh one for the new total of one ninety-four oh thirteen with adding to the town clerk's salary of twenty-four, I'm sorry, twenty-four sixty-one, so try everybody's mind on that one, everybody in favor?
All right.
Aye. Okay, so again, the new total for town clerk's office is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Do I have a second on the new total for that account? We have a second, any discussion on that total? Try everybody's mind, all in favor on the town clerk's salary, I'm sorry, account?
All right.
Record show unanimous.
He's kind of sound like a horse racing.
Okay, account, account ten dash one forty, the assessor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the dollar amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars as presented tonight by the person.
Second.
Is there anything, um, I thought, um, Izzy did a, a good presentation, it's all obviously contract salaries, little bit of postage and stuff, so. Any other discussion on the assessor's account? Try everybody's mind, Dee's not waving her, I had a look, I had a look, I didn't want to yell that out. All right, uh, so try everybody's mind, all in favor on the assessor's account?
Aye.
Let the record show you unanimous.
Account number ten dash one fifty, tax book, I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the dollar amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars as presented tonight by the first select.
Second.
Excellent, again, same thing with tax collector, uh, contractual obligations. Not much, everything else was pretty flat besides office expenses, so. Any other discussion on one fifty tax collector? Try everybody's mind, all in favor?
Aye. Sure. Like to make, there's somebody, sure, you don't go into this. Like to make a motion that we approve account ten dash one thirty and the, for professional services in the amount of three hundred and six thousand, one hundred and eight, uh, one hundred and eighty dollars as presented tonight by the person.
I think this is ten dash one thirty.
One sixty, I'm sorry, thank you.
All right, so, and we have a second?
Second.
So this is another account that there's been a change, but Brad had given us the five-year, um, backup here. Um, it's, it's a fluid account, obviously. Um, you know, we're trying to keep everything increases low, Dan did make a, uh, adjustment to it, so is there anything else on professional services? Try everybody's mind, everybody, all in favor, please say an aye.
Aye, thank you.
This is the one, um, Will, do you want to make a motion on this?
Account ten dash one seventy, the probate court, like to make a motion that we approve seven thousand, five hundred as presented tonight by the person.
Second.
Again, probate, as you see, it's a pretty small account, we share it with other towns, so is there any other discussion on the probate court that we're all gonna use, meant for sooner than later?
Twenty-five percent of the four seventy. So it's not, it's based on, I think it's based on populations, it's Redding, Newtown and Ridgefield.
Redding, Newtown, Ridgefield.
And Bethel, yeah.
So the largest one paying into would be Ridgefield.
Yeah.
By the people. All right, uh, all in favor on the probate court, please say an aye, please, thank you.
Account number ten dash one ninety, information technology, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the dollar amount of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars as presented by the first select.
Second.
We have a second, um, Brad, nothing's jumping off the page, we don't need you.
No.
Right, okay. Any other discussion on information technology, IT? All in favor?
Aye.
Record show.
Account number ten dash two ten, insurance, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the dollar amount of one million, three hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars as presented by the first selected.
Second.
This, this account, I know Sebby's looking at it very closely with Brad's help, I understand. Um, we're trying to see if capture any more savings here, um, and we'll talk about it when we get into C N R. Uh, but again, there's, uh, potential savings here, right, Sebby, additional savings. Just say yes, Sebby.
Tell Brad, tell Brad how to answer that question.
All right, so again, everybody knows that this is obviously town benefits. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the jokes are never here for nothing tonight, they're not worth anything.
No, that's the cost. No, it's the charge.
Right. No cover charge.
Account number ten dash two fifty, planning and zoning, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the dollar amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred, one hundred and eighty-four dollars as presented by the first select.
Second.
Um, so we have a, again, planning and zoning, there was an adjustment with that part-time position, but is there any other discussion on planning and zoning?
I think Dan explained it.
We'll try everybody's mind, everybody in favor on the two fifty planning and zoning, thank you.
Account number ten dash three thirty, to register our voters, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars as presented.
We have a second.
Second.
I would like to amend John's motion, um, there's another thing, again, the, the registers, we have to, um, do their salary. Um, they put in a thousand each, um, they do have a lot of work this year, and it's another thing that I like to do during our budget season, but the number is not going to change, but we just need to vote on the fifty-one oh one representing a thousand dollars each to each, uh, register. So, um, I have a motion on that, okay, so do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. You understand what I'm saying is the dollar amount doesn't change, but we just have to vote on that. Um, so, so all in favor on that, adding a thousand to each register?
A total of two thousand dollars, right?
Yes, but no, the, the new total is fifty-six, nine seventy-five, did I not say that?
One fifty-six.
Right, but you, but it's the total, yeah.
The total is fifty-six thousand, nine seventy-five. That represents the thousand each in there for, for the increases, okay?
A total of two registers.
Right, exactly, so all in favor on that, right? Okay, so with thousands each, and again, the total did not change, it is one fifty-six, two seventy-five. And do we have a second on that?
Second.
We amended it.
I got you.
No, did, do we do anything for the deputy?
The deputy is set by the first select.
By the first of all.
Yeah, and there is money as part of the wage adjustment calculation for the first select.
And that's in the notes, sir. Okay, so any other discussion on the, on the registers? All in favor?
Aye.
The record showing unanimous, thank you.
Account number ten dash three forty, boards and commissions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the sum of sixty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars as presented tonight.
Second.
All right, so we all know what this is, obviously, secretary is recording secretary and stuff, so, um, any other discussion on this one? Pretty, pretty bland here, all in favor, record show unanimous.
Aye.
Okay, so we're skipping over the park and rec, but we already made it through that one.
Rachel left, didn't she?
She was gone.
Fled.
So I'd like to make a motion, account number ten dash three ninety, employee benefits, I'd like to fund it in the amount of, a motion to fund it, uh, for six million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars as presented.
Second.
So again, benefits, I mean, Brad's doing what he needs to do on this, obviously, so, any other discussion on employee benefits for the town?
Is there any savings that we can get from here or?
The, or lock height? The state is supposed to on March fifteenth come back and give us the final rate increase. The budget calls for the max, they're talking about three to five percent, budget calls for five, hopefully it's three, or what the state controller was talking about, maybe two. But the reps that probably actually do a lot of the work, we're talking three to five still, so. Three's great, two would be better, so we'll see.
And we'll talk about that a little further down, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say the mechanics of how we get that money either in some, yeah.
We'll talk about that.
So, but at this point, there's no adjustment for it.
Got you, exactly.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second on employee benefits, all in favor? Six, say an aye.
Aye.
Dee, did you have a question or was that was a yes?
No.
That was a yes.
Yes. Like to make a motion, ten dash four oh five, um, intergravel agency, it bring the amount of five hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars as presented tonight.
Second.
Everybody knows what that is, heart busts and all the other little agencies, so. Any other questions on that, motion and a second, all in favor, please say an aye.
Aye.
Like to make a motion, account number ten dash four ten, utilities, in the amount, fund it in the amount of three million, fifty-three thousand, two hundred and eight dollars as presented.
Second.
This is another one of the count, we may capture a little bit of savings with the, with the, um, I'm sorry, gas, Yankee gas, it's not Yankee gas, but natural gas, um. So again, we'll, we'll talk about that a little further, but Brad, you feel comfortable, this is where the number is.
Yeah, I don't think this one's gonna change much.
All right, yep, working every angle, so all in favor on the utilities?
All right.
Your control commands.
Okay, here's where we make up a little bit, account number ten dash four twenty, miscellaneous charges and transfers, I'd like to make a motion that we approve eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred dollars.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Excellent, I'd like to see if John would amend his motion, uh, fifty-three, fifty-three wage adjustments in the total of seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Well, but you, you have to take, you want to take out twenty-two.
Add or subtract?
No, 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 oh, it's, it's.
It's a reduction of twenty-two.
Twenty-two, I'm sorry, I don't know why, I'm sorry, the new dollar, I'm sorry, I want to subtract twenty-two thousand, four sixty-one out of the fifty-three, fifty-three wage adjustment account.
Second.
Okay, so everybody knows where we're going, just catching up.
Yeah.
Well, but just for point of order, so, so I think you wanted to amend my motion on the dollar amount, but you really should make a motion to, uh, subtract out of account fifty-three, fifty-three.
And that's what my motion was. That's what my motion was.
He just did that.
Okay, so with the new dollar amount, um, would be seventy-two, nine thirty-nine left in that account. And so we have a motion and a second on the fifty-three, fifty-three number, all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody good on it? All right, so again, if, if you let, um, the new total is eight, twenty-seven, nine thirty-nine on the miscellaneous account four twenty. We have a second?
Okay.
Okay, everybody saw what we did, we just, again, the increases, we just moved down to this account, so try everybody's mind on the new dollar amount, all in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion, account ten dash four thirty, the senior center, like to fund it in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars as presented tonight.
Okay.
Senior center, I think they do a nice job, very small increase, so I don't think we need to discuss much about that.
Well, maybe Will has.
Yoga's good, oh, I'm sorry, Will, you might have.
No, no, maybe he does.
Is that just a cool way of saying, you know, old people stuff?
You brought us Matt tonight, you thought he was coming to the.
I'm a little flush.
I gotta get more refreshments down there, a little gatorade.
Yeah.
All right, again, we have a motion and a second on senior center, uh, four thirty, all in favor? The record show unanimous.
Account number twenty dash one eighty, the building inspection, inspection, um, I'd like to make a motion that we fund three hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars as presented tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion on the building inspection?
Can I just bring up one thing?
Yes, sir.
Um, this contracted services line that goes to zero, it's under the assumption that the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance approved buying that vehicle out, but it's, there's a lease that ends in June.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, you mean one more, not the ones.
Do it, but I don't.
Yeah.
If the boards don't buy the vehicle, the contracted services line doesn't have any money to lease a new vehicle, just.
Excellent, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor on the building inspection?
Aye.
Record showing unanimous.
Account number twenty dash two ninety, emergency man, I'd like to make a motion that we fund in the amount of four six thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, anything else on emergency, any other comments on two ninety? Try everybody's minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Record show unanimous.
Uh, account number 20-300, the fire marshal, I'd make a motion that we approve in the amount of 114,234 dollars as presented.
Second.
Fire marshal, pretty self-explanatory, contracted services or contracted obligations. Um, any other?
Oh, he's not a contract employee, is he?
He's employed.
Fire marshal.
Yeah.
Is he a contract employee? I'm sorry, a union employee? No, not union.
Not union. All right. Any other questions on the fire marshal? All good? Try everybody's mind?
Aye.
Aye. Um, please, anybody from the fire department?
Account number 20-310, the Bethel fire department, I'd like to make a motion that we fund it in the amount of 212,142 dollars as presented.
Second.
Okay. So there's some things moving around a little bit to try to take some of the increases off the taxpayers, especially after reevaluation. So, uh, is anything else on the fire department? Will, you don't want to take the hose away on there? Everybody, please sing, I say aye?
Aye. Okay. That lobby Joe, why'd you get here? Like to make a motion that, for account 20-320, the Stony Hill fire department, then fund it in the amount of 192,450 dollars as presented tonight.
Second.
Get on what we just moved a little bit of equipment there. So all in favor on the police department, senior saying aye?
We're going by the police department. Social services, account number 30-200, I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the amount of 111,000 dollars as presented tonight.
Okay.
I think Megan does a great job in there.
Love Megan. Of all the Megas.
How many hours are we increasing the part-time person?
That was, um, if you remember, um, um, Mario Larry is, is doing some part-time work in there. Um, they're trying to hit more things and it double people, um, we're pecking at people. So.
I thought it was gonna, I think it's still good. Yeah, I don't have it, but some of it was, um, the first leftman set different rates for that position when they go out and do field work with Megan. So some of it will be taken up by that. Um, but it was only, they're going out in the field and acting, um, in a, like a, almost like a co-director instead of somebody that's doing like office work. So.
All right. Try everybody's mind, everybody in favor?
Aye. Account number 30-350, the health department, I'd like to make a motion that we fund the account 540, 540,482 dollars as presented tonight.
Second.
We have a second on health department. Um, yep, and we have a second. So any discussion on the health department? Try everybody's mind, everybody in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Account number 40-220, fleet maintenance, I'd like to make a motion that we fund in the amount of 407, uh, 719 dollars.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, again, we're taking care of what we have to. I, you know, we're, we're watching this one right there. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of increases, but there's a lot of equipment, right? A lot of license plates.
But aren't making license plates?
There's a lot of license plates. No, we're not.
Also, I mean, this is a reasonable increase, it's getting over.
Yes.
For, for parts, cost of parts and all that last year, but I think you're on top.
Excellent. All in favor on fleet maintenance? Saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Account number 40-230, public works, I'd like to make a motion that we fund in the amount of 466,191 dollars as presented tonight.
Second.
Okay, public works, is any other discussion on public works? Try everybody's minds, saying aye?
Aye.
Account number 40-240, the highway department, I'd like to make a motion that we fund it in the amount of 2,594,547 dollars as presented.
Second.
We have motion, a second. Again, this is the road account. We did add 50,000, just trying to keep up with inflation on that. So, um, you've got to take care of what we own. So. And this question on highway? Everybody's minds, saying aye?
Aye. Transfer station. Account number 40-245, the transfer station, I'd like to make a motion that we fund it in 216,427 dollars as presented.
Second.
All right, transfer station, any other comments on that? It's a.
I'll, I'll make a comment. I think, I think we need to give it, just like all of our capital plan, we, we need to look at the transfer station and really, really make some hard decisions on if it's good for Bethel and negative for Bethel, but we need to do something.
I was told it was a sacred pound. I guess. I don't use it much. I can't drive under a red truck because they all think I'm suspicious.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, have any comments?
Yes, please.
Um, Mr. Leonard, I take that point and we're, we're actually working on something before the, um, I guess the town meeting on the floor, well, actually, the next meeting coming up, we're going to have, uh, before the public hearing, a small public hearing on the transfer station group. And it's going to be an information session. H R R A is going to come in here. We're going to go through all the costs of what it is for our customers or residents and what it costs, you know, otherwise, if they were getting it dropped off at their house. She's going to cover a little bit of the, the food program too, the food scraps. So it's a, it's an opportunity to really talk about whether or not we want to do something with it, if we should look at privatizing it, if we should look at raising costs, whatever, raising prices rather. It's all on the table.
So everything's on the table.
It's on the table. Okay. Right, great. It's an opportunity for, you know, folks in town to actually come and hear, you know, what the numbers are.
I think Newtown is doing that tonight.
Are they really?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Great, thank you.
All right. So again, we have a motion and a second on transfer station. All in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Account number 40-260, building maintenance, I'd like to make a motion that we fund the account 926,537 dollars as presented.
Second.
Building maintenance, again, um, you know, I think it's high. I understand we got to take care of our buildings, but you're trying to be more efficient, Mr. Selectman.
We are.
That's important. Right, that's a good thing, right?
Well, I mean, it's, it's continually, listen, we, we have a lot of work up to us in those buildings, especially in the old school. You know, we've done the walkthrough, we've looked at it. Uh, there's a ton of stuff to do in those facilities, but, and in the day, we can only, we got to figure out the most efficient reasonable way to do it.
So you had said if the 460 account is really what's taking care of the schools, but this million dollar account is taking care of the schools. So we spend a million and a half.
It's all over the map in every building.
Right. Well, I, I get there's other buildings, but the majority of it.
Because this is where our salaries come from. We have our guys working on the schools, right? The, uh, you know, the actual parts and materials come out of the 460 in that case, but not the bodies, not the labor.
But there's material here too.
No, not, oh, this is not just the labor. Materials, you know, for all the other things, you know, this building, you know, we, we have a ton. Actually, we just had an apple inspection and there was such a thing. I said, and a special engineer that was set the whole outside of the building is we had the, the stairway back here had some cracks in it. It's not going to fall. But we do have a lot of work to do in this building. It's a whole building.
But I think it's fair to say in the private sector, when things get tough, we try to do more with less.
Yes, sir.
And I think if we just follow that through with town employees, that perception would be different.
And we are, and we, we listen, we're trying, we're trying to motivate them. We're giving them the technology.
And you did that in your presentation. I think that's great. Give them training. So there's, there's no reason not to do that next job.
Yeah.
We have a motion, we have a second on building maintenance 260. All in favor? Saying aye?
All right. Account number 40-270, the tree warden, I'd like to make a motion that we fund it in 171,500 dollars as presented.
Second. Oh, here we go. Good.
Listen, I don't think the fire room was getting up to the top of your hill. I'm not sure. All right. So we have a, a tree ward and a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? Small increase? Been a long time since.
So I, I, before, yeah, so Brad, we always said the park and rec's paying for a tree, the tree warden's paying, did this go up or do we have a better handle on who's paying for what in the town?
So the new rule, and I should have the first election, why don't you talk about it?
What?
All right. So if it's trees and it's, the tree warden says the tree needs to come down, it's coming out of this account. Because it got too confusing. A parking wreck in 23 spent like 30 grand on trees, whereas Rachel has no say. They come and say the tree needs to come down. So if trees are costing us X amount of dollars to town, let's put it in one place. So it's easier to track and we can stay on top of what tree removal cost us.
Excellent.
Any other questions on tree? All right, try everybody's mind, saying aye?
Aye. Account number 50-440, debt services, I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the amount of 5,269,569 dollars as presented tonight.
Second.
Everybody knows what this is, our mortgage payments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Except for making the motion on the total dollar.
Yes. And you, uh, again, since.
Oh, I'm sorry. So don't we have to, don't we have to fund the tax stabilization?
Oh, well, you got to vote on the total town board.
Okay, on the, on the total.
This is expensive.
Right. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the amount of 92 million.
I'm sorry, just the town.
Oh, sorry.
Operating debt service and board of maintenance.
Yeah. So how many with that number? Oh, the 57.
The 37,482,097.
Okay. So can I, Mary, can I, that be my motion? 37,482,097 dollars.
Second.
You have a second. Great. All right. Uh, any discussion on the, the dollar mountain for the town? Let's all vote on this and then say aye? Any of us? Okay. And so now we need to do the school. So is that correct?
The school you did already.
We did, oh, because it's bottom lining.
And then the big total, grand total.
So the total is the 92,233,229, which I don't think you need to vote on because they're separate referendum items. They're kind of right.
Yeah.
Great. Um.
No public hearing.
I'm sorry. Yep. But we do have, we do have to fund, um, in, in our calculations here, we're gonna fund of, of the, the tax stabilization. So do we have a motion for that?
We should do probably the public hearing first because it's part of the deliberations and then the second agenda, the last agenda, and then it is tax.
Right. So my Sebby, Mary. She requested that we have a public hearing on March 19th at seven o'clock at the Bethel High School. So that is my motion. So do I have a second for that?
I'll say that.
Excellent. So we have a second. Uh, obviously everybody knows that this is a public hearing to get the public input. So all in favor on the public hearing? Say aye. Okay, great. So that's done. So again, so now we need to do tax stabilization. Um, so someone want to jump on that?
So I'd like to make a motion that we, that we fund our new tax stabilization and add 500,000 dollars to it. And it's coming out of the, Brad, help me word.
Coming out of the fund balance, for the fund balance policy.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay. Everybody knows what we're doing here. We're giving a little bit of, trying to cut the increase of taxes down. So. All right. So we have a motion. We have a second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Saying aye? Thank you. All right. Um, I think we're done. Yeah, I think we're good. So again, I really do appreciate everybody being here tonight. Um, I think that's great. Um, I wish this was lower, but there is needs. The, the more you get involved, the more you realize that there's real needs in this town. Um, and, uh, I appreciate everybody talking about this. So.
What I like about it is everybody worked together and kept up on it like in increments rather than.
And since we're all here, Dan, would you humor me by, uh, your camera and the phone? If everybody else can get behind us and we take a group picture, because.
Really?
Like, because we're family now.
I don't know. I'll do what you want. You're the, you're the chair.
I would entertain a motion.
Look this way.
I would entertain a motion. We have a motion, we have a second? All in favor?
Take a pic.
No, no, you guys are going to stand up and get behind the emblem here. Come on. Did everybody vote on the motion? So adjourned? Thank you.
Well, now they're. Oh, yeah.
Exactly. It's a big deal.
Celebration.
It's a tax refund to the citizens of Bethel. Come on.